Good. Okay. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I would like to call the Northampton County Council Meeting of November 2, 2017 to order. Please rise for a moment of silent prayer. Thank you, and please remain standing for the pledge.
Pledge to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Zembo, can we call the roll?
Mr. Bennell?
Here.
Mr. Kusick?
Present.
Mr. Dees?
Here.
Mrs. Ferraro is here, but not. Mr. Geisinger?
Present.
Mr. Kraft?
Here.
Mr. Phillips?
Here.
Mr. Vaughn?
Here.
And Mr. Vorn?
Here.
Mrs. Ferraro is...
She's here somewhere.
She's in the building somewhere.
All right, then the next item is the approval of the minutes of the October 19, 2017 council meeting and the October 11, 2017 budget hearing. We have a motion by Mr. Kraft, seconded by Mr. Bennell, to approve by acclamation. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed or abstentions? Passes by a vote of eight to zero. Next is courtesy of the floor. I have one person signed up, Mr. Moore.
Good evening, counsel.
Welcome back.
Thank you. I had a couple of things from last time at the budget meeting, which not all of you were at, and something new that's a concern that came out of Maria's delivery at the budget meeting, my presentation. First, I wanted to address Mr. Kusick's question to Maria at the budget meeting. He asked her, could you address the discrepancy between the, apparent discrepancy between the municipalities and the county? She didn't address what I'm trying to bring to you as the major discrepancy and problem with this program right now, and that is the matching. She talked about the fact, well, we don't have enough forms moving forward. That's not true, number one. If you look at the 2017 list, there's forms from several of the EIT townships. The question is where they fall on the list. In Plainfield, ours fell near the top. They happened to fall at the top, which we didn't know when we pledged our money. If they hadn't, and they come down below, would have needed our money. So you don't know. The problem with the program, the way it's now being run, underfunded, is that you don't... I'm sorry. Okay, recover my time. Is that you don't know when the window closes. No one knows how much money Maria is going to need and what townships is going to need. And only Maria knows in January what that's going to be. So the discrepancy is the program has been upended by Mr. Brown underfunding the program and us having to, as I talked to maybe in the last meeting or the previous one, in Moore Township in 2015, there's a form that still has not closed that they're going to be asked to pay over $500,000 for, out of their money. And in that year, that was the year that the county took without any notice, $189,000 of their matching funds that came back from the state, and in Plainfield Township, the same amount. That's wrong. That's just wrong. We had a fire drill last year, which I've reported to you. It was a major fire drill. We had multiple special meetings to try to fund, and we all, we came through, all three townships. Maria didn't allow us to pledge a week later, after the last one voted to pledge, because we attached a condition evidently. It was the reason that we wanted our, whatever the match is, we want all the match on our money, of our funds that we pledge. Okay, we had excuses. Open space advocates say it's time to pause. There's a running balance. When the first year, Mr. Phillips questioned $3.4 million, we found out Maria was here, most of that was spent. Running balance is not the problem. $37.000 bond was brought up. As of today, for next, through this coming year, only $27.2 million of the half mill would have been used for that. Gas P was brought up. That's a principle, not a requirement. Not enough forms applying. I just went over that. It's not true. Maria, here's, here's the main thing I want to get to you, and I do have two requests at the end. This sheet, I did this once before to you, and somebody gave it to Maria later, she says, wow, he's real close. We know what, how this works. Here's the deal. In the first column, it shows what's going to happen if the townships are not allowed to pledge money, like they haven't the last two years. In the second column, it shows what will happen if they are allowed to pledge, and they pledge the full amount, which I expect they will. You can see, there's over a million dollar difference. Bottom line, I'm not going to go through this line by line. You can do, I hope somebody does that with Maria, one of you, one or more, and in my opinion, and others that have expertise. She's only going to be able to serve about 475 acres if the townships aren't allowed to contribute. If they are, it's 735. However, our full expectation, given Mr. Brown's comment a month or two ago, there'll be no conditions allowed on these pledges. I can tell you, in our township, I'm not a voting supervisor. I see no chance in the world that unless we're going to get return on our money, we're going to pledge it. So I fully expect there will be a condition, and I would expect that in the other EIT townships, too. And that's my concern. And Maria stood here and said, I think I can make it. She didn't address pledges at all, she didn't address townships participating at all, which I find frightening, because she fully knows that this, this, I'm sorry, this discrepancy exists. She's not, she's doing what she needs to do, in my opinion, to make the program run, being that it's underfunded. So let me get to, you know, Mr. Stoffer ran on a platform of instituting attacks for open space. So in my opinion, the voters of the county have said, we want to preserve open space. Little Landscapes was not funded. It's a darn shame. Just last night at a watershed meeting, there was a discussion of streams, which is one of the things you guys made sure to get into, that Little Landscapes program, and it was discussed that there's no funding. So, Mr. Kusick, I wanted to acknowledge your concern. Here's what I'd like to see done. I would like this year for the administration to clearly detail to the townships what they can expect for matching. Last year, in November, we were told it would be 35 cents on the dollar. In December, we were told you may get no match at all. That can't happen. We have to have some expectation. Is that's my one request? My second request is the council stay in touch with Maria through those early days in December, to keep up to date on what applications she's received us for, to give, you know, some idea of where we're going to stand. I understand that by the time the budget's approved, that's probably too late. It's around December 15 is when her window closes, but she'll have an idea in early December where things stand. I don't know if you can make a last minute change or not. But the problem with the matching, I tell you, this year, I think it's really going to be a problem, and I see no way she's going to be able to make it. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, that was all I had signed up. Is there anyone else that would like to address counsel this evening under courtesy of the floor? There being none, we will move then into the first item on the agenda, the Controller's report. I see Mr. Barron is here. Do you have, no? Okay. County Executive's report, Mr. Brown?
No.
No report? Okay. Then the first item under old business, consideration of the County Executive's veto of the ordinance entitled An Ordnance of the County of Northampton at Easton, Pennsylvania, authorizing the Northampton County Board of Elections to submit a ballot question to the electors of Northampton County for the purpose of electing a government study commission to consider the repeal of the Northampton County Home Rule Charter, the advisability of the adoption of an optional form of government, or to continue with the present Northampton County Home Rule Charter. This ordinance was adopted by County Council at the meeting held on October 19, 2017, and vetoed by the County Executive on October 23, 2017. In order to override a veto, a two-thirds majority, majority of County Council members, six votes is necessary. A vote in favor of the veto override resolution is essentially a vote in favor of the ordinance as adopted, and a vote against the override is essentially, is a vote against the original resolution. All right, so I'll just read it into the... A yes vote is a vote for...
For the charter.
The charter study. A no vote is a vote against the charter study. Okay. So now therefore, be it resolved by the Northampton County Council that the County Executive's veto of the ordinance titled An Ordnance of the County of Northampton at Easton, Pennsylvania, authorizing the Northampton County Board of Elections to submit a ballot question to the electors of Northampton County for the purpose of electing a government study commission to consider the repeal of the Northampton County Home Rule Charter, the advisability of the adoption of an optional form of government, or to continue with the present Northampton County Home Rule Charter, shall be overridden this second day of November 2017. And we did have an animated discussion over this a couple of weeks ago. Are there any further comments or discussion from members of council? Anyone? Mr. Warner?
Yeah, I just want to add some of my thoughts on this. We're speaking of a government, a governance model that was built in the 70s, and it has some conspicuously outdated references to typewriters, defunct vector controls, dated 1997 salary scale references. And there's been a lot of confusion on job description terminology, interpretation of conflicts of interest, based on the charter being the governing vessel that embodies the provisions and functions of the codes. And because good governance is to be transparent, protect people's interests, and not exclude them from the process, to say that the Home Rule Charter Study Commission is not needed is a little bit irresponsible, in my opinion. The fear of the study and its outcome is only that we have something to fear. This is not an issue to have any kind of temper tantrums over regarding personal feelings or suspicious moves. I petition my colleagues to consider that good government protects the interests of those that are elected us and not our own interests, and that's my statement to everyone.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Mr. Geisinger?
Mr. Kusick, I voted against this two weeks ago. I plan to vote against it again. I still have not had anybody tell me how much this is going to cost. I have no estimate. I've heard estimates from nothing to half a million dollars. Somebody tell me what it's going to cost. One. Two. You made the point, Mr. Warner, that it's good government. I've heard people call this the Constitution of Northampton County, and I think that's an accurate description. Constitution of the United States, a rather brief document. However, if you take a look at the rules, regulations, ordinances, and different documents that have come out of it, you could stack them so high that they would probably reach well to the sun. That's the problem. The administrative code is the problem, not the Home Rule Charter. If we first fix that, which is what we set out to do, which is what we said we would do, then I think we can go back and take a look at the doc, the items within the Home Rule Charter that do need amending as separate and individual. But the real problem lies not in the source document, but in the administrative code. And that is why, again, I cannot favor this particular ordinance. Thank you.
Anything else, Mr. Kraft?
Yeah, I'd also like to say that I'm voting no against this also, and I implore everybody else to vote no. I still stand by, it's a political stunt, but we need to fix the admin code. We put money aside to fix the admin code. Most of your references, most of your things that are wrong, most of our, all of our lawsuits, everything comes from the admin code, whether it's the purchasing part, whatever part we look at, that's what we need to fix. That's what we're here for. That's what County Council's here to do. And I agree with Mr. Geisinger again, even though I'm not supposed to, that when we're done with that, and we straighten out the admin code, then we should look at the Home Rule Charter, and we should decide what needs to be updated. We don't need to throw the baby out with the bathwater. And I'm voting no, and I implore everybody else to vote no.
Mrs. Ferraro?
I concur with my two colleagues, because I think we're putting the cart before the horse. I think we can, to open this up, you have no idea how much all of this is going to cost. And I've talked to people who've been involved in the past, and they started making lists of people that we would need, things that would need to be done, and the dollar signs, the cash register really starts digging. So I think the logical place to start is the administrative code. That seems to be the problem. And then, then go to the Home Rule Charter for the simple parts that need to be done.
Anyone else? Then Ms. Zembo, can we call the vote?
Mr. Kusick?
Yes.
Mr. Dees?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferraro?
No.
Mr. Geisinger?
No.
Mr. Kraft?
No.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn?
Yes.
Mr. Warner?
Yes.
And Mr. Bennell?
No.
Passes by a vote of five to four.
Okay, so the override fails by a vote of five to four. All right, next item, public hearing on the ordinance entitled An Ordnance of the Northampton County Council, authorizing the County of Northampton, Easton, Pennsylvania, to lease approximately 3,280 square feet of office space identified as 269 Blue Valley Drive, Bangor, Pennsylvania, from United Hoisting Company Incorporated, Long Island City, New York. That would be District Court Number 03-3-03. And this ordinance was introduced by Mr. Geisinger and Mr. Bennell at the October 19 meeting. The public hearing, debate, and possible vote will be held at this meeting. Okay? So at this time, I would like to conduct the public hearing. Is there anyone from the public that has questions or comments? See, the district judge is here. If she'd like to say a few things, she's welcome. No? And Mr. Gug Green is here, our court administrator. Any questions related to this? Okay, then council? Call for the vote. Council? Okay, so before we vote on this, we receive word from the court administrator that there needs to be one amendment made to this particular ordinance. And if you turn to the second page, under Article 1, it says term, lease agreement term, it says the term of this lease shall be for 10 years commencing on. Okay, so the amendment that needs to be made is we need to strike January 1 and replace that with April 1.
We don't do the amendment, because the lease is being amended. Our ordinance doesn't have the date in there. They're just amending the date and the...
I understand that, but I would like this as part of the process, so it's transparent that we know that in the paperwork that that's going to be the amendment.
And I would think since that's Exhibit A, we would have to at least reference it out.
Yes. So we have a motion by Mr. Kraft, seconded by Mr. Bennell, to make that amendment from January to April. Any further discussion on the amendment? No. Yes.
Mr. Kraft?
Yes.
Mr. Geisinger?
Yes.
Mr. Kusick?
Yes.
Mr. Dees?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferraro?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn?
Yes.
Mr. Warner?
Yes.
And Mr. Bennell?
Yes.
Passes by a vote of nine to zero.
Passes unanimously. Then the next item is a public hearing on the ordinance entitled An... Oh, thank you. Now the vote on the ordinance as amended.
Mr. Geisinger?
Do we need to read it in again, or are we going to...
No, no.
Okay, all right, yes.
Mr. Bennell?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferraro?
Yes.
Mr. Kraft?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn?
Yes.
Mr. Vorn?
Yes.
Mr. Kusick?
Yes.
And Mr. Dees?
Yes.
Passes by a vote of nine to zero.
Passes as amended, nine to zero. Next item is the public hearing on the ordinance entitled An Ordnance of the Northampton County Council, authorizing the County of Northampton, Easton, Pennsylvania, to lease approximately 3,500 square feet of office space identified as 400 Northampton Street, Suite 100, Easton, Pennsylvania, from 400 Northampton LP, Easton, Pennsylvania. That would be District Court Number 03-2-05. This ordinance was introduced by Mr. Bennell and Mr. Geisinger at the October 19 meeting. Public hearing, debate, and possible vote are scheduled for this meeting. At this time, I would like to conduct the public hearing regarding this lease ordinance. Is there anyone from the public that would like to address counsel? Okay, there being none. Are there any questions or comments from members of council? None. And there are no amendments for this one. So Ms. Zembo, can we call the vote?
Mr. Bennell?
Yes.
Mr. Geisinger?
Yes.
Mr. Kraft?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn?
Yes.
Mr. Warner?
Yes.
Mr. Kusick?
Yes.
Mr. Dees?
Yes.
And Mrs. Ferraro?
Yes.
Passes by a vote of nine to zero.
Passes by a vote of nine to zero. Next item under old business is the public hearing on an ordinance entitled, an ordinance of the County, the Northampton County Council, authorizing the County of Northampton, Easton, Pennsylvania, to lease approximately 2,100 square feet of office space identified as St. John Street and Philadelphia Pike, Suite Number 700C and 700D, Easton, Pennsylvania, from NIDI Group LLC, TA Plaza at Crossroads, Lehigh Valley, Pennsylvania, District Court Number 03-2-06. The ordinance was introduced by Mr. Geisinger and Mr. Warner at the October 19 meeting. Public hearing, debate, and possible vote will be held at this meeting. Is there anyone from the public that would like to address counsel regarding this lease ordinance? This is the one moving from Line Street. Am I correct? Okay.
Mr. Kusick, if I may?
Yes.
Again, lease a term for 10 years commencing on January 1, 2018. That's okay?
That one's changed.
Nope. This one, we will need to amend, so we will need to strike January 1 and replace that with April 1. So do we have a motion to amend? Moved by Mr. Bennell, seconded by Mr. Warner. Okay. Ms., any debate on the amendment? Ms. Zembo, can we call for the vote on the amendment?
Mr. Bennell?
Yes.
Mr. Warner?
Yes.
Mr. Dees?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferraro?
Yes.
Mr. Geisinger?
Yes.
Mr. Kraft?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn?
Yes.
And Mr. Kusick?
Yes.
Passes by a vote of nine to zero.
Okay, so now, any further discussion on the ordinance as amended? There being none, Ms. Zembo, can we call the vote?
Mr. Geisinger?
Yes.
Mr. Warner?
Yes.
Mr. Kraft?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn?
Yes.
Mr. Bennell?
Yes.
Mr. Kusick?
Yes.
Mr. Dees?
Yes.
And Mrs. Ferraro?
Yes.
Passes by a vote of nine to zero.
Passes unanimously. Next item is a public hearing on the ordinance entitled An Ordnance of the Northampton County Council, authorizing the County of Northampton, Easton, Pennsylvania, to lease approximately 2,773 square feet of office space identified as 3 Weller Court, Easton, Pennsylvania, from the township of Palmer, Northampton County, Pennsylvania. That is District Court 03-2-09. This ordinance was introduced by Mr. Warner and Mr. Geisinger at the October 19 meeting. Public hearing, debate, and possible vote will be held at this meeting. At this time, I would like to conduct the public hearing. Is there anyone from the public that would like to address the lease ordinance? Okay, there being none. This one, I believe, does not have to be amended. So at this time, are there any questions or concerns from members of council? There being none, Ms. Zembo, can we call the vote?
Mr. Warner?
Yes.
Mr. Geisinger?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn?
Yes.
Mr. Bennell?
Yes.
Mr. Kusick?
Yes.
Mr. Dees?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferraro?
Yes.
And Mr. Kraft?
Yes.
Passes by a vote of nine to zero.
Passes unanimously. The next item under new, old business is a public hearing on the ordinance entitled An Ordnance of the Northampton County Council, authorizing the County of Northampton, Easton, Pennsylvania, to lease approximately 2,847 square feet of office space identified as 3rd and Polk Building, 322 East 3rd Street, Bethlehem, Pennsylvania, from Polk Street Development Associates LP and Polk Street Development Group Incorporated. That is District Court Number 03-2-10. The ordinance was introduced by Mr. Geisinger and Mr. Kraft at the October 19 meeting. Public hearing, debate, and possible vote are scheduled for this evening. At this time, I would like to conduct the public hearing. Is there anyone from the public that would like to address counsel? Mr. Green? This one would need to be amended. So we need a motion to amend. We have a motion by Mr. Warner, seconded by Mr. Bennell, to change, to strike January and replace it with April. Any discussion on the amendment?
Just, just one question if I may. This says 12 years. It's not 10 years? Okay. Fine. Thank you.
Any further discussion on the amendment? There being none, Ms. Zembo, can we vote on the amendment?
Mr. Warner?
Yes.
Mr. Bennell?
Yes.
Mr. Kusick?
Yes.
Mr. Dees?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferraro?
Yes.
Mr. Geisinger?
Yes.
Mr. Kraft?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn?
Yes.
Passes by a vote of nine to zero.
Passes by a vote of nine to zero. I'd like to recognize that district judge who is smiling. Thank you for coming. All right. As amended? Okay.
Mr. Geisinger?
Yes.
Mr. Kraft?
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn?
Yes.
Mr. Warner?
Yes.
Mr. Bennell?
Yes.
Mr. Kusick?
Yes.
Mr. Dees?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferraro?
Yes.
And Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Passes by a vote of nine to zero.
Passes unanimously. All right, one more. Next item is a public hearing on the ordinance entitled An Ordnance of the Northampton County Council, authorizing the County of Northampton, Easton, Pennsylvania, to lease approximately 2,650 square feet of office space identified as 1710 Butler Street, Easton, Pennsylvania, from James S. Garofalo, Easton, Pennsylvania. That is District Court Number 03-2-12. The ordinance was introduced by Mr. Warner and Mr. Bennell at the October 19 meeting. Public hearing, debate, and possible vote are scheduled for this evening. At this time, I would like to conduct a public hearing with regard to this lease ordinance. Is there anyone that would like to address counsel from the public? Okay, there being none, any comments or concerns or questions from members of council? Okay, and this one does not have to be amended. Okay? Ms. Zembo, can we call the vote then?
Mr. Bennell?
Yes.
Mr. Geisinger?
Yes.
Mr. Warner?
Yes.
Mr. Kusick?
Yes.
Mr. Dees?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferraro?
Yes.
Mr. Kraft?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
And Mr. Vaughn?
Yes.
Passes by a vote of nine to zero.
Passes unanimously. Okay, that was all we had under old business. Is there any other old business that anyone would like to bring up and discuss at this time? It's new business. Okay, so then we will move into new business. First item is the consideration of a request for a prison study from National Institute of Corrections Resolution. This resolution was prepared by Mr. Phillips, and I would ask him to introduce it at this time.
Sure. Let me read this. Whereas Northampton County Home Rule Charter, Section 2028, provides that the county shall have, among others, the following power to require... have, among others, the following power to require periodic and special reports from elected officials and their subordinates, and where Northampton County Executive engaged a DLR group to conduct a study entitled, "Northampton County Integration and Rehabilitation Center Study," to provide information for informed decision-making relative to what is needed, the number of beds by classification, service, and program, comparison of options for meeting a need, providing a general estimate of probable development costs, and addressing to what extent long-term operational savings can be realized to offset capital costs and provide for future relief to the county budget. The final draft dated October 20th, 2017, and provided to County Council on October 24th, 2017. Whereas the National Institute of Corrections, the NIC, is a federal agency under the Federal Bureau of Prisons, United States Department of Justice, whose activities are intended to contribute significantly to the achievement of federal, state, and local correctional goals and priorities for providing service and effective planning, management, and operational strategies. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Northampton County Council, that the Northampton County Executive, directly or through subordinates, contact the NIC with the intent of asserting whether they could provide, at no additional cost to Northampton County, a study that would cover all or part of the material covered in the DLR group study in order to provide a second opinion on some of all the facts and conclusions put forth in that DLR group.
Any comments, questions?
I have a question.
Sure, Mr. Kraft.
So you want to bring the feds in here to look at a 200-year-old prison? So if they find it very deficient, like, you know, we say it is, they'll mandate that we build it and tell us to shut it down?
Right. I want the fed to come in here. We have a number of people saying that there's other options, we don't need a new prison. This is a prison that, not only the prison is going to be like $187 million, but first off, we have to do is buy the facility in West Easton and then transform that to hold women prisoners, and then...
Well, who says we want to buy the Easton facility?
Hold on a minute. That's part of the plan that was put out.
Yeah, but that's not...
I have the floor. I'm not taking a question.
Oh, go ahead.
Then we have to build a temporary facility for parking, including a ramp, parking deck. Then we have to rip down the current parking deck. Then we have to build the prison. Then we have to rip down the old prison, and then we have to build a new parking deck there, and then we have to rehabilitate the existing newer part of the prison. This is, it may need to be done. I think we do need a new prison. My concern is that we've gotten, the DLR group, we went out, it wasn't competitive, we bid, and we don't have a second opinion. This is major surgery, this is major financial surgery. I would never do any kind of surgery without a second opinion. We have the National Institute of Corrections, whose job is to provide this kind of guidance. I'd say that that's what's needed. I don't see a downside for it.
Well, I see the downside of if the National Institute of Corrections come in and shut us down, then we have to find housing for hundreds of prisoners until we build a new one. That's going to be millions and millions of dollars, you know, and the foolish move of buying Easton's facility for a women's prison, you know, there's mandates over there of what kind of prisoners we can have. And I don't know whether you think because they're women, they're not, they can't be, you know, violent criminals, but we're not allowed to put anybody but DUI people in very limited kind of offenses in Easton. So you're going to propose to buy the Easton prison and put every prisoner in there that's a female, well, you can't even do that now. Easton will not let you. So there's one thing that's completely nonsense. When we lease that, yeah, well, DLR can say what they want, but when we lease the Easton prison, the whatever, West Easton prison...
Just clarifying.
The citizens there said they only wanted a certain class of people. They didn't want anybody there that was, you know, violent or anything like that. And that is one of the reasons why we got that lease over there. Now, if you look at that old building, you're buying another old building, you're buying the old Rita Mill. Why would we do that? You know, DLR may come in, they have studies, they have many different ways to do it. If you want to keep it here, you could put the women in the new annex of the prison, you could put work release downstairs in the new annex of the prison, and you could build the prison, you know, and do everything right here. So, I mean, if you want to open this up, I'm going to vote no to this because I don't want to have the feds come in here and have the off-chance of costing this county millions of dollars for housing people because they find major deficiencies in our jail right now. We're opening up a Pandora's Box again, as you like to say, and we could be in a world of hurt. Then wait to see your budget and your needed tax increase to house prisoners elsewhere. Think it's expensive now, just wait.
Mr. Phillips?
That scenario that I gave, that's not my idea. I have some problems with it, obviously it needs to be fleshed out, but that was a scenario that the administration put forth as a preliminary of how that could get done. So that's not my idea, I'm not, it wasn't generated from that, but that's something that may come. The other thing is, if we get the feds in here and they look at the prison and they see something that's a major safety violation, that's against people's constitutional right or safety, we have to address it. I'm not afraid of bringing the feds in.
Well, I got to tell you, I think it's another foolish endeavor. We have a study, you know, in that study, it wasn't just here, all of a sudden, all you're talking about is right here, we had greenfields that could possibly put a prison on, we have all different other options in that study. And, you know, I'm, for one, never going to buy the West Easton prison for a penny on the dollar for that piece of junk over there, and I think we should put everything in here. So, I mean, the whole prison thing is, you know, it's a mess as it is, I know this prison over here is a mess, I know it has problems, but to bring the feds in, I'm telling you, you only need to be shut down. And I don't know if the prison director's here, but he can tell you what it costs a day to house people in Jersey and New York and then bus them here for their trials and everything, the judges will have an aneurysm on you. So, you know, I don't know what you're doing here, and, you know, yeah, it's a free study, but after the free study's done, then they're going to recommend to do another study for $100,000. You know, I have to say no.
Mr. Benel?
I'm not in support of this. I mean, I'm okay, you know, another study, again, I think DLR was just a minor stepping stone. It's just a step in a direction for the next council and current executive-elect to figure out. We all agree we need a new prison. You know, we were talking about the Planning Commission and then how they were talking about regionalizing the country, the feds wanted to regionalize the country, and we were all against the federal government coming in here and telling us, you know, how we should plan things out. To ask any bureaucrat from Washington to come in here and tell us what to do, and then, let's face it, we all know that that's just a ticking bomb. I don't think I'm speaking out of turn, we all know that that prison's in bad shape. And I don't think it's a matter of if the feds are going to find something wrong, it's when they do find something wrong. And I think that the cost associated with that, I agree with Mr. Kraft, the costs associated with that are going to be astronomical. So it just, right idea, wrong agency. I just think it's completely foolish to have some, the feds come in and start looking at our business because I think it's just opening up a can of worms.
Mr. Phillips again?
If the feds come in and find that we're violating some of these constitutional rights or we have a severe safety issue that needs to be addressed, we would have to address it. I mean, I think that's our obligation. I wouldn't use that as a reason not to have the prison examined.
But I think the problem is, we already know what the issues are, we are addressing them as best as we can, and that also brings us to the point of, this council has finally agreed that, okay, we need to address the issue of a new prison, rehabbing the old prison, and again, a DLR study was just a minor step in that direction. It's not giving us direction, it was the recommendations. We had seven different recommendations to consider. We had the executor's recommendation. At some point, we're going to have Director Keen's recommendation. So it's just, again, this is just, I think, a leap in the wrong direction.
Mr. Wyatt?
I'm going to weigh in on this thing because I don't think we were in favor of the DLR contract in the beginning, if I remember correctly, we weren't exactly happy about that. So now that it's here, okay, and we're dealing with that, I have a problem with muddying the waters up with another piece of information that might make it twice as bad. It's kind of like buying a car, they take it back to the dealership and they do their 35-point check and come back with a $3,000 bill. They're going to find something, I agree with that. Right now, we can't even figure out what we're doing with a $185 million proposal with a prison, nonetheless worry about another study. So I, as much as I know where you're going with it, and I agree that there might be further security issues, I can't cloud the issue with another study.
Mr. Vaughn? And then Mr. Deetz?
Just a quick question. I guess I probably haven't done enough of my homework on the National Institute of Corrections. Have you contacted them? Have you, do you have any information on other studies that they've conducted for free, and if so, how did the studies turn out for those particular counties?
No, I have not, I've looked at them, I have, just a very cursory institution, I think, and that's why I worded it this way, that we're asking the administration to contact the NIC and get in dialogue with them to see if they can provide that study. I didn't go out and attempt to have this, I don't even think it would be appropriate for me to go out and talk on behalf of the county to get an understanding and sort of negotiate what the study would look like. I think that is definitely an administrative position, that's why I'm asking them to do it.
Okay.
And it may come back, that's why I think I also worded it, is that can they provide this information in all our part? Because they may be able to say, well, we don't do this part, we do this part, I want something that's apples and apples.
Well, I just have one thing to add to that.
Mr. Vaughn has the floor, then Mr. Deetz, then you can go.
I like your intention, but I just wish I had a little bit more information about the process that they take, how do they come in, what steps they take, how long is it going to take them to do their study, and what would be their recommendations ordinarily if they find deficiencies? Are they going to shut us down? Are they going to fine us, are they going to make us transport prisoners? I just don't know enough about it to vote in favor of it yet. That's my position.
Mr. Deetz?
Two things, one, I think we already have inspections, you know, the same as Greysdale and that does, so, you know, I don't think they're going to find anything that they have not found already going through there. And I think that, and actually, I kind of take a different view on you than Bob, is that, so if you take your car dealership, your car dealership, they're going to find something. We took it to a private entity who's, they're going to find, you know, they're looking for work, right, so they're going to find something, the third eye or third option on it, or having someone else look at it, that doesn't have skin in the game of getting a construction job afterwards, you know, may say, you could fix this or do this for half the price. These are the other options that we've seen other counties or other prisons go through.
Mr. Kraft, again?
My last thing I want to say before I call for the vote, if you would, I believe that if they do come in and they find the prison to be, you know, that we have to close it and find housing for other people. It could possibly force either massive tax increases so we have to house everybody till a new prison's built, or we'll have to build a prison on a greenfield that nobody wants it built on to have it done in time while we house the prisoners here before we move them over. So you may open a can of worms. I like to make it like it's playing, like with the taxpayers' money, you're playing Russian roulette with a full clip, you know? I mean, why are we doing this? So I just think everybody should vote no, and we should, you know, move forward. Because if we get stuck with this and they say, close it, we have to house 100, 200, 300 people, it's going to be a nightmare.
Yeah, I'll just say a couple things. Mr. Phillips, I think this is well-intentioned, but I worry as to, you know, what may come up. I think we all know that the current jail is functionally obsolete, that's not even debatable. We've, I've been here for a previous study that was done in 2008, and now I've seen this one. There are no good options. I even went back and I pulled the 2008 study and I looked at it. The recommendation that Mr. Brown made was, if you look in the 2008 study, it was essentially what was presented to us then as Option 5. It is the least worst option, if I could describe it that way. No matter what it's going to cost money, it's going to take time, and it will be inconvenient. I don't know if another study will tell us anything more than the two studies that I've already seen. What I would like to have is, I would like to have DLR come before us, do a presentation, and then allow us to ask questions before we go out and ask for an additional study. So I think this is well-intentioned, but I first would like the opportunity to have DLR present. I'd like to ask them questions, and if we're not satisfied, we can look for additional studies or even hire somebody else. Mrs. Ferraro?
And just a reminder that we have an option for funding this that we didn't have in 2008, and that's the new legislation that's been passed to allow prisons be done with the P3 project.
Mr. Brown, you'd like to address this?
Thank you, Counsel. Just a few points along that line. Number one, the 2008 study which you referred, Highland had done that, if you read that study, what I had asked DLR to focus on was, would there be an efficiency gained if we were to do a new facility? That was not specified in the Highland report, they said, who are your options, here's what you could do. That report, I believe, in the Option 5 that you referred to, is about $130 million project at the time. In the intervening 10 years, or there are about nine years, you're looking at about a 5% compounded cost. So we're at $185 million because 10 years ago, eight years, nine years ago, the trigger wasn't pulled to achieve really what we're looking to achieve overall. The, I think the benefit of the report that was done, the fact that it is recommending that we remain here on the eastern campus, which I fully support, allows us then to address some of the other ales of this campus that have been longstanding, such as parking, some of the buildings that we have that are in various states of disrepair. So it becomes a multi-phase project, obviously, in order to do that, but once completed, it really then sets this campus up and this government to really have taken care of most of their assets, providing the services that we need, accessibility to the building, so on and so forth. The legislation that Ms. Ferraro is referring to was something that we've worked on from the administration. We approached Senator Pat Brown several months ago and asked, because of the, we believe the value that we saw in the bridge project, being able to do a public-private partnership, which we were permitted to do under Act 88, signed into law in 2012, does not, that legislation was specifically for transportation facility, and that's well-defined in the act. We could not do a jail or a building or a non-transportation facility. We approached the center and said, we think there could be value if we needed to do a project of this scope. He agreed, Senator Bosa Scola agreed, Senator Scavelo, and they were able to help us get this legislation passed, which permits Northampton County and Erie County specifically to be able to undertake a jail project of this nature with that. I believe that that structure of a public-private partnership is, would likely be the best value for the county to move forward. We don't know. The DLR results basically are just saying, here's the direction to begin to move. There's a lot of work the administration still needs to do in framing even how we would begin to undertake this type of process moving forward. There's still more work to be done. Another study, I agree with most of the opinion of counsel, it's just going to tell us more of the same. I think after 20 years of waiting to get to this point, at least currently, there's an administration willing to take this head-on. I do believe there's opportunities for us to do it in a very competitive way, minimize the best we can the cost overall while leveraging what we can to really put in a multiple remedies with that. So I would recommend that counsel not support the resolution. I don't see any additional value of another study, whether it be private or through a free agency as the NIC with that. Fortunately, I believe that, and I will, we have spoken to DLR about coming in and presenting fully to counsel so you can ask your questions and understand more deeply the study with that. But with the recommendation from DLR, with the potential efficiencies gained, with the legislation having been passed... efficiencies gained, with the legislation having been passed, we believe that we have the building blocks in place to actually structure, really begin to put a robust program together and how to begin to really move this project forward in time. Another study, if they were to take six, nine months, you lost another year, you can add another 5% to the $185 million, whatever the number would be. Relative to the cost of construction, that's easily confirmed. That's really a relative standard, that benchmark, if you would, cost per square foot of, you know, jail. That's relatively what they use. The parking, rebuilding the parking, those are auxiliary but related projects that would also have to be phased in over a number of years. I'll just remind counsel that from start to finish, you're probably looking at a four-year window just to do the jail, if not longer, for all the pieces to fall into place. So, and to Mr. Kraft's point, we did look at, in terms of if we were to just renovate the current site, the cost, I think, in the DLR report was somewhere around 83, 84 million. You might get a 10-year shelf life out of that kind of work. But what was not factored in was the several million dollars a year it would cost to relocate if we could find the beds. To find a single institution that could hold even 100 of our inmates, we would be shipping inmates to multiple sites across, you know, the region if we could even find that. That becomes a very costly expense over several years. So just a little more insight into how the administration is viewing this project. We're moving fairly quickly to begin to understand how do we structure it, what format would it take? The financing, I'll also remind counsel that that's always been a concern of the administration in terms of interest rates, or they're not record lows, but they're near-record lows. And if we do have to borrow money in order to do something, then this would be an environment to do it. If it changes rapidly, that could really add a significant cost long-term to the project. So we have been moving with a sense of urgency. As I stated, you know, I felt when we came in office, the finances were number one, Greystein number two. We have our bridges in process to begin to address that. And this, I really do believe, is probably the most significant asset, infrastructure need that the county has to address. And I think everyone in this room is clear that it needs to be addressed. This administration is willing to address it, or at least return to counsel with a little more work of how we could begin to swallow the elephant, if you would, in a more rapid fashion than's been done before. So with all due respect to Mr. Phillips and his wanting to confirm with additional studies, it's not something you would find a lot of support from the administration with either at this point.
Mr. Warner, you had a question?
Just, the DLR report is not complete. It does not include, in terms of dollars and cents, the garage, park garage numbers are not included in those figures.
No, the parking, replacing the parking garage becomes a second project that would be in there. And I agree. And that's part of, really, what this will spur is really because this is the site that is recommended and selected, what really we need to do is to just lay out a master site plan, which would phase in all the various impacts that would have, which would include the parking deck, which would include the cost of doing the parking deck, those types of things that are in there. And that needs to be done. And that would be part of the overall recommendation of how we would even begin to phase these things through, what are the various costs that would be to it. You know, the repairs we did to this parking deck, we felt we'd get, you know, maybe a 10-year shelf life off of that eventually, but we've not addressed the parking issues that have plagued this particular courthouse for some time. That becomes a secondary benefit, I think, to addressing the jail. The parking becomes a secondary benefit. Will we get to address the parking in a similar type vein moving forward? The timing and all of that, that's all got to be laid out and begin to analyze. But that's part of what I'm saying. The next few steps are to begin to really paint that complete picture, add those auxiliary costs, those types of things in there, which are going to be in there.
All due respect, I think those auxiliary costs and the things that are not in that complete report are going to put it out of reach for this counsel and this government.
Well, unfortunately, Mr. Warner, I respectfully disagree in terms of the following respect. We don't know yet. And that's the work we're willing to do, to come back to counsel, lay this out and go, okay, here's what we think is the best scenario financially. And how does that impact the taxpayers? How does it impact what we're doing? But the knee-jerk, and often what happens is, you know, we see a price tag and everyone just automatically knee-jerks, and that's why things don't move forward. I'm willing to go at least as far and say, okay, well, let me at least finish this. Let me come back to you with a recommendation on what it would likely cost, how we would finance it, what would be the impact potentially on our reserves, on taxes, those types of things, and then provide a fully informed approach to how we could address this before we go down that, before we commit to the full project. But too often, prematurely, we say no without really understanding if it could be done. And I think, and I'll point to the bridge project, while it's only, you know, one-fifth the size of the project, a $40 million project that if you had asked, said it came through in the format that it did, no one would have believed that it could have been done that way either, until we moved down that path. And I'm just saying, I think we can lay something out, you know, before we ask counsel to commit 100% to anything. Those are the facts that we have to continue to explore. Another study is not going to do it, but there's more work that the administration has to do in order to begin to prove some of this concept out. And we've been working on it for quite some time, so there's, you know, we have ideas of how we can do it, but we have to begin to put that on paper and bring it forth.
I'm going to respectfully disagree that the $185 million is just the beginning, and I don't see it getting any better in terms of what the add-ons will be, the parking garage, things that are going to take place, even if that would come to fruition at all. I don't see the numbers working right now, not in the near future, anyway.
And if I could just add, I think the question before us is whether or not we want an additional study at this time.
Thank you.
And again, I'll just repeat myself. Before we would go this route, for me, I'll be voting no because I want to hear from DLR first. So, you know, if you would like to table it until then, I could consider it at that time. But I think I would rather hear from DLR and talk to them and hear their presentation before I ask for an additional study. Any further discussion? Ms. Zembo, can we call the vote?
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Bennet?
No.
Mr. Kuzick?
No.
Mr. Dietz?
Yes.
Mrs. Farraro?
No.
Mr. Geisinger?
No.
Mr. Kraft?
No.
Mr. Vaughn?
No.
And Mr. Warner?
No.
Fails by a vote of two to seven.
Fails by a vote of two to seven. All right, so that was all we had under new business. Is there anyone else who would like to bring up any new business at this time? That was from the Economic Development Committee. That'll be at the next meeting's agenda. Okay. I just had a couple of things. I'm not sure. I guess it's new business. There was a new casino gaming law passed. I know, Mr. Phillips, you had an extensive presentation some time ago regarding this. I'd appreciate, maybe at some point, Mr. Hurlinger, you could dig into it and let us know how this might affect us. I know the Airport Authority will be discussing whether or not there's going to be, what, slot machines or video game terminals at the airport. I think that, I saw something where municipalities can decide whether or not to exclude VGTs, and there could be a potential vote on that. I don't know. I just think we need to look into it more to see what needs to be done. The other thing is, I got an email from the CCAP Assessment and Taxation Group today that there is going to be legislation introduced regarding the Airbnb payments, authorizations at the state level, and that legislation would force the state to share data with local municipalities. And I may introduce a resolution supporting that legislation if and when I get more information. Any other new business? Counsel Committee reports. Mrs. Farraro?
The Economic Development Committee met earlier this evening, and I thank my fellow colleagues here for attending this committee meeting. We saw an extensive and impressive presentation by the Da Vinci Science Center, and I think no one argues the benefits of this project. But I think some of our fellow council members are still awaiting the county executive to make some kind of funding recommendations. I would hope that the executive, council, and Da Vinci, perhaps the three of us, three bodies could work together and come up with something that is going to bring this project to fruition.
Okay. Any other committee reports? Mr. Phillips?
Just a reminder, last month, we said that we wouldn't have a capital projects meeting for November. That's going to be rolled into the budget process. No capital projects.
All right. Liaison, any liaison reports at this time? Counsel clerk?
Next budget hearing is November 8.
And what's on the agenda?
Capital projects.
Economic Development and Human Services. And I believe that the District Attorney's Office will be here as well.
Yeah.
Solicitors report?
Just two issues. One was that you, I think you all received an email from a former county employee who's engaged in litigation with the county. I think that came to all of you. If anyone has any questions about that, I'd be happy to discuss it, but I think it would have to be an executive session, since it's both a personnel matter and litigation. If you have no questions, well, so be it. Okay. And the other thing I just wanted to bring to your attention is, several council members, as you know, previously asked for us to proceed with, or asked you to proceed with, an ordinance that would require voter approval for certain types of lending or borrowing by the county. After that ordinance was circulated, there were a number of responses received, primarily from the solicitor of the GPA, indicating essentially that if that ordinance were enacted, it may very well have negative effects on their ability to do the work that they are assigned to do. I have since discussed it with the individual, the attorney who wrote to us about that. I've discussed it with one of the other attorneys involved. I discussed it with Mr. Hurlinger, who was kind enough to send me some additional documentation about who else we might want to consult with. And I discussed it briefly with Mr. Hunter. And what I, the conclusion I've come to is that they make some good points. Before this comes back to you, and I've discussed this with Hayden and Matt, before this comes back to you, I'm trying to put together a meeting of all those people so that everybody can air what their concerns are, and we can bring it back to you, either recommending nothing happen or a change to the existing ordinance. I'm trying to do that sometime in the next 10 days.
Anything else for the good of the order? Well, do we have a motion to adjourn then? Moved by Mr. Warner, seconded by Mr. Bennet. Have a nice evening, everyone.